Councilmember Perkins.
Here.
Councilmember Verrose.
Here.
Vice Mayor Armstrong.
Here.
Mayor Hudson.
Here.
And Councilmember Rubio is not here this evening.
And please join Councilmember Perkins leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America to the Republic for which it stands one nation under one law, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Scott. Okay, are there any announcements at this time?
There are no announcements.
Are there any changes in addition to the? Okay. Okay, I can give incentives. And then Kelly, do public comment. Okay, let's open public comment. Now's the time for anyone to address the city council on AI. I'm not on the agenda, or if they want to ask to pull an item under four. Please note that the the city council is the sole discretion of whether or not they wish to pull that out. Do we have any cards? Susie, please take up to three minutes.
Thank you, Mayor Hudson, council members. I'm here to request a new CIP study to develop a better long-term fix to the asphalt pathways within the Summerwood Loop area and the South Safe Routes to School Zone. The last study performed by Public Works Department was done in fiscal year 2014. None of the long-term recommendations were accepted or implemented at that time. Since then, periodic repairs have been made to the worst sections only. Similar patches are planned for this year. As an original homeowner of thirty-seven years in the neighborhood, I'm concerned about the health and safety of our schoolchildren and the long-range cost to the city if a more permanent replacement solution is not undertaken. I'm therefore asking the city council to request a new study for such a solution or proposed solutions. To reinforce the need for such a study and such action, I created a poll on Nextdoor. I opened the poll up to all San Ramon residents because so many of the people who do not live in the immediate homes walk here almost every day with their pets and their children. The poll results are included with this request. Along with several narratives related to the trail pathway condition which most impacts our young students. Because those areas parallel the Iron Horse Trail and portions of that trail are in need of repair, we are hopeful that some mutual agreement could be found with the Regional Parks Department to share some of the cost of those needed repairs or replacements. Recently, Kenstrom, the Patio Homeowners Association president, who represents one section of the Newcastle area and I, representing the Executive Home area that does not have HOA, met with Robin Bartlett and John Bell to discuss the need for such a long-term solution. Robin suggested I pursue my request for a new study with the council. Therefore, I'm here asking the council for your support for a new study and a long-term solution that will ultimately save the city much-needed monetary budgetary costs and protect the community well into the future. Thank you for your time and support. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to try and answer them.
Thank you. Do we have any other cards?
Taiwan's a country.
Okay, and just so, before anybody asks a simple question, why didn't you answer? State law prevents the city council from discussing AI items that are not on the meeting's agenda. We take them serious and staff will follow up on them. Proper, go ahead.
Thank you for your reminder. So I just want to say that it was very disappointing then that if page twenty-two, which only you guys have and nobody who came to this meeting had because there is no agenda packet, then why is it that you didn't question Mr. Shea? Why is it that in his one-point-two budget, quote-unquote, doesn't have any slope stabilization? Zero. When I'm, I just shared with you, I'm looking at two new landslides. Literally, the grass is missing from the slope. All I see, all I see is just dirt and he didn't identify them in his report. Those are the things that you should have asked, but alas, because the person who represents me is not here and none of you I can vote except Mayor Hudson. So I understand why you don't really care. I just want to share something with you all. I used to be so happy when it's time for Pledge of Allegiance. Lately, I am very, very concerned when I pledge my allegiance and when I pledge allegiance, I mean it with my heart and soul and my life. And these days, I don't know what I'm pledging to, to, to all the government meetings I have been going to. It seems like I'm not a citizen. It seems like I'm a slave. Everything I request, I ask, nobody cares. It just went through their heads like nobody cares. I'm just a tax slave. Also, what is a republic? I understand I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. There is no saying that we are a republic. A republic of what? People's Republic of China? That's exactly how I feel. I live in a communist country. So next time when you see that I'm being silent, it's not because I'm not patriotic. It's because I'm patriotic with meaningful existence. I, every word I pledge allegiance, I say to people, I mean what I say. When I have doubts, when you guys treat me inequitably like I'm a tax slave, I have the right to remain silent. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further cards?
We have one hand raised on Zoom.
Okay.
Azad Armandia.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Thanks for giving me an opportunity. My name is Azad Armandla, proud resident of San Ramon for last fifteen years. I'm also a repeated realtor and I actually am proud and happy to bring people to San Ramon, saying this is the, one of the best cities to live, bring up your children, great schools, amazing trails and beautiful neighborhood. I live in a Windermere community and one of my daily rituals is to go for a beautiful hike from Dog Park all the way to Longleaf or even Hatum behind the high school. Recently, for the last few months, our beautiful hike and trail are, the hike is obstructed by the free-roaming cows. Normally, I, in the last fourteen-plus years, I was never worried about them. They were not aggressive at all. But this season, there, instead of being ten, fifteen cows, there are more than hundred cows with lots and lots of calves, eng calves. I think because of that, they're very aggressive. I have captured photos and videos when they're trying to be aggressive. In fact, when people who go for hikes are stuck in the middle and not knowing how to come back because the other way around is too long a trail. And this is not my singular, what do you call, experience, but it is a case with many, many people whom I talk to. So here is a question I posed to my representatives, Sridhar Veros, and in fact, I am here at the suggestion that we should be putting it to the city. I understand that these hills are city's property and the ranchers are given a right to just let the cows roam around so that they can graze for a couple of things. It's a good grass and it also prevents probably possible fire hazard when the summer peaks. But then my request is this, as citizens, we have a basic minimum requirement of enjoying our hills and going for a good hike wherein we can be healthy citizens and also take pride. The ranchers can let them, what do you call, graze all day long from morning five o'clock, four o'clock to evening, maybe three or four and again in the evening, but at least during the peak time of in the evening walks, maybe around three to four, four o'clock to maybe probably seven or eight, we should have a safe trail to hike. We, we just can't take it. In fact, I have a couple of people who are on the call joined and they have seen, they, they said that on singular occasion, they had to throw in front of the cow trying to prevent a, an eng family. So I want city to help us have a safe hiking environment. Thank you. I rest my case.
Thank you. Any other emails or?
There are no hands raised and no additional public comment.
Okay, we will close the public comment. And again, I'll repeat, state law prevents the city from discussing this item or any ideas you heard during the public comment. We do take them serious and the staff will follow up on them if they feel it's appropriate. Okay. And the next item is consent calendar. Consent calendar items considered routine in nature acted upon by city council with a single motion. Do you have any requests to remove an item? Seen that any? No one? Okay. What's the pleasure of the council?
I move five-one through five-nine.
My apologies. Just one moment, please. Can we do this one manually?
Yes. Okay, all second. You moved, right?
Yes, I moved. He seconded.
Oh, you seconded.
Oh, you did. You seconded.
All right. Okay, you got that. Motion Perkins, second Armstrong. Any further discussions? Seen none? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None. It passes four-oh.
Thank you.
Okay, consent counter passes. Next item.
Special presentation.
A special presentation. I'm gonna ask Vice Mayor Armstrong to do this for me.
Okay.
Right. I have here a proclamation of the city council of the city of San Ramon, declaring May twenty-first through twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-three as National Public Works Week. Whereas public works professionals focus on infrastructure, facilities and services that are of vital importance to sustainable and resilient communities and to the public health, high quality of life and well-being of the citizens of the city of San Ramon. And whereas these infrastructure, facilities and services could not be provided without the dedicated efforts of public works professionals who are engineers, managers and skilled employees from state and local governments and the private sector who are responsible for maintaining, rebuilding, improving and protecting our nation's transportation, water supply, water treatment and solid waste systems, public buildings, parks, landscaping, creeks and other structures and facilities essential for our citizens. And whereas it is in the public interest for the citizens, civic leaders and children in the city of San Ramon to gain knowledge of and to maintain a progressive interest and understanding of the importance of public works and public works programs in their respective communities. And whereas the year twenty-twenty-three marks the sixty-third annual National Public Works Week, sponsored by the American Public Works Association and Canadian Public Works Association. And whereas this year's theme, Connecting the World Through Public Works, highlights the way public works professionals connect us physically, through infrastructure and inspirationally, through service to their communities, whether as first responders or daily workers carrying out their duties with pride. Public works is a thread that connects us all, no matter where we live in the world. Every public works professional strives to improve the quality of life for the community they serve, leading to healthier, happier communities. Now therefore be it resolved that the city of council of the city of San Ramon does proclaim May twenty-first through twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-three as National Public Works Week and encourages its citizens to recognize the accomplishment and contributions of government employees at all levels, federal, state and municipal. Dated May twenty-third, twenty-twenty-three. Signed, David E. Hudson, Mayor.
Okay, Maria, take three hours for your speech.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Armstrong. Thank you, Dave, Mayor Hudson and council members. Thank you for this acknowledgement of National Public Works Week and recognizing the public work staff for the hard work, dedication and customer service that we provide day in and day out. We take great pride in what we do and I believe it shows through our high quality of how we manage, improve, renovate, maintain and operate all of the city's infrastructure and facilities. I like to think that we are, that we operate like Disneyland. All the visitors go to the park to have a great time, not thinking or worrying about safety, focused on the beauty of the surroundings and enjoying the atmosphere. And if you've ever seen Disneyland in the wee hours of the morning with everything shut down, the roads, the rides not working, they're down, shut down, the stores closed, you'll see hundreds of staff buzzing around, cleaning everything up, maintaining the walkways, the landscaping, the lights, the rides, the buildings and making repairs and improvements, preparing for the next day. The next day comes, the gates open and the staff who worked so hard behind the scenes are nowhere to be found. But yet they have left their mark for the thousands of visitors ready to enjoy their day at Disneyland. So this is what we do, I believe. We, we work behind the scenes to try as seamlessly as possible to improve and maintain our city. to improve and maintain our city at the highest level so that our residents and visitors can enjoy our parks, use our pools, play on our sports fields, drive our roads, walk on our trails, go ride on bikes. We enjoy, we ensure the trash is collected, landscaping is pristine, the potholes are patched, the signals are running, the creeks are cleared, and the fields are mowed. And when an issue is brought to our attention, we are ready to respond at a moment's notice. Thank you for this opportunity to recognize city's public works department during National Public Works Week. We appreciate the councils and city managers' continued support and will continue to do our best to do our part in providing a high quality of life, safety, and well-being for our citizens of San Ramon. Thank you.
We thank you for what you do. I think a lot of people realized how much you do when, when the creek went over Alcosta. And everything that used to be in the creek was now on Alcosta. Trees, branches, whatever. Thank you, Maria.
Yeah, I, I just echo that. You all do such a great job with all our, the parks, the dog parks, the roads, the, you know, all our facilities, aquatic centers, you na, you named all those things and, and probably didn't even cover all of it, but you got a great staff and do a great job, and it really leads or lends to a, a great quality of life for the citizens of San Ramon. So thank you for all that you and your staff does to make this a great place to live.
Thank you.
So, thank you, Maria. Thanks to each and everyone of our public work staff. Appreciate your vital role in making sure our residents are taken care of, being behind the scenes, but you always know what the community needs and you make sure it is taken care and helping them with their safety as well as making sure their well-being and providing them the best quality of life. I really appreciate all the work that is done through your response for the citizen requests, especially the CRM, the time that you respond is amazing. So, thanks, and let's continue with this.
There are no easy years.
Thank you very much, Maria, and your whole team. We really do appreciate it.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay, and thank you, Mark, for reading that for me.
You bet.
I'd still be reading if I were down there. Okay, our next item is unfinished business, item nine point one, public hearing for resolution number two thousand and twenty-three, test sixty-two. Now, do we need to reopen the public hearing before I take this staff report?
We'll take the staff report.
Okay, John Bell will do give us a staff report again. Thank you, John.
Yes, different public hearing, open, close, and then questions and then.
Okay, good evening, Mayor Hudson, council members. I'm going to begin this public hearing with a presentation of the entire landscape and lighting district nineteen eighty-four dash one. Brief overview of this presentation, we're going to start with a, a background of the district, the purpose of the reserve study, the math, maximum assessment rates and the methodology, the annual assessment rates and the proposed increases or no change, the underfunded zones and the public outreach we intend to do, and the improvement projects we completed in fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three, and the upcoming twenty-three, twenty-four improvement projects. So the landscape and lighting district was formed in nineteen eighty-four. These assessments that are included in this district fund the maintenance of public landscaping, lighting, and other amenities. And we have nineteen separate zones, two citywide zones, seventeen special zones. Each zone has its own special fund. Funds can only be used in that exact zone. We cannot use funds from one zone into another zone. And the district is reestablished each year by council action. And in accordance with Prop two eighteen, the city is, does everything it can to ensure that we are in compliance with Prop two eighteen. This is a, a map, the diagram of the entire landscape and lighting district nineteen eighty-four dash one. The gray area is Doughty Valley that is not included in this district. So the color codes are all nineteen different zones. The white area, zone one and zone two, is citywide lighting and citywide landscaping. So the purpose of the reserve fund study is to assess the adequacy of funds over thirty years. We use these funds to maintain existing improvements, make planned replacements, make planned improvements, and account for deferred maintenance. And we're, we're starting to use a methodology that's going to account for deferred maintenance over the long term. We also like to have reserves in case we have emergency repairs. So two terms we need to define, maximum rate and the assessment rate. The maximum assessment rate is a not to exceed assessment amount. These are voted on and approved by property owners, and the actual annual assessment rate may be less than the maximum rate. The only way to change the maximum rate is by voter approval of the property owners within that zone. The assessment rate is the rate to be levied. These are the actual assessment charges to the property owners on their property tax bills, and these can be increased or decreased by city council action up to the maximum assessment rate. So the methodology for the maximum assessment rate, there's several different methodologies based on the development of these zones, citywide zones one and two. The city may increase, increase the maximum rate annually based on the CPI up to two percent, and this was approved by a ballot in two thousand and six. Special zones three to twelve, these maximum rates were set by property owner balloting in nineteen ninety-seven. Any increase to these maximum rates would require ballot approval. Special zones thirteen through seventeen, these were established after nineteen ninety-seven. Again, these would require property owner ballot approval to increase these maximum rates. In special zones eighteen and nineteen, these were established through property owner balloting, and these can be increased up to two percent annually based on the CPI. So for citywide zone one, it's citywide lightning, and it includes the maintenance of approximately thirty-nine hundred streetlights. And zone two is the landscaping in the city public right of way. As I just stated, can, we can adjust this based on the CPI not to exceed two percent. The February, February twenty twenty-three CPI for San Francisco Bay Area, all urban consumers was five point three percent. So we are allowed to increase the maximum assessment rate two percent. Fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three, zone one's maximum rate was thirty-three dollars and ninety cents with an increase of sixty-eight cents that would go to thirty-four dollars and fifty-eight cents in fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four. Zone two maximum rate, seventy-three dollars and twenty-five cents is an increase to seventy-four dollars and seventy-one cents in twenty-three, twenty-four. Combined, the maximum rate from twenty-two, twenty-three to twenty-three, twenty-four is a two dollar and fourteen cent per unit increase. Looking at the assessment rates, for zone one, we are not proposing any changes to the assess, assessment rates due to the reserve balance. Zone two, we are showing an increase of a dollar forty-six to keep up with expenses. So zone eighteen and zone nineteen, the maximum assessment increases follow the same principle of two percent based on the CPI of five point three percent. We're going to go up two percent. Zone eighteen, eight Old Ranch Summit, well, there's no increase needed in this zone. This zone has a, a large reserve. The max assessment that can be charged is one thousand eight hundred and fifty-eight dollars per parcel. We are charging three hundred and fifty dollars right now. So we are not going to increase that, and we are not going to charge the maximum rate. Zone nineteen, that's a unique zone split between three parcels. The max assessment rate going up two percent is fifteen thousand four hundred and ninety-two dollars and seventeen cents. That's a one thousand four hundred and ninety-two dollar and seventeen cent increase, and we will be proposing to charge the maximum rate due to renovations in that zone. So for the rest of the zones, the recommended annual increases, we have Canyon Lakes, an increase of seventy dollars from last year was zero dollars based on the fountain renovations. We had a reserve balance in, in that zone. But now we are going to increase that seventy dollars for twenty-three, twenty-four. This is San Ramon, the two asterisks, that is subject to the ballot result. So it is getting charged at its maximum rate right now, based on the ballot results. That could change. Summer loop, we have a twenty-three dollar increase from ninety-seven dollars to a hundred and twenty dollars. Old Ranch states a fifty dollar increase from three hundred to three hundred and fifty dollars. The single asterisks for West Branch, Bank Creek, and Deerwood, those zones are currently being assessed at their maximum rate. Village Parkway, thirty dollar increase from seventy dollars to a hundred dollars. Crown Ridge, twenty dollar increase from seven hundred and thirty dollars to seven hundred and fifty dollars. And as a stated, Glass House, one thousand four hundred and ninety-two dollar and seventeen cent increase. And the Glass House is now being assessed at its maximum rate. We have several underfunded special zones that we are looking at for the near future. These zones are projected to have negative balances within the next ten years due to rising utility costs, contracts, personnel, and some of these zones that are being currently charged at the maximum assessment rate, there is no way to go to an increase without ballot approval. So for twenty-three, twenty-four, we, we have a, a zone, West Branch, zone six, that we are going to start public outreach. For the maximum rate is three hundred and eighty dollars, and that is being currently applied. That maximum rate has, was approved in nineteen ninety-seven, and this fund is showing a negative balance in twenty-five, twenty-six. So our process for public outreach will collect zone data to describe the pending zone expenditures for the fountain and the landscape. We're going to develop options for fountain and landscaping, report these findings and options to the property owners to start discussions on possible altern, alternatives or assessment increases. And then we will refine these options and costs and bring this to the finance committee and city council. So the annual operating cost for fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four for the fountains, this is just for the fountains alone, twenty thousand dollars for the step fountain maintenance, nineteen thousand for the reflection fountain maintenance. We have almost five thousand for equipment repairs and supplies, a seventy-two thousand dollar water budget. And the big number is PG&E. The PG&E cost for these fountains is ninety thousand dollars. This zone is only solvent for the next fiscal year due to the savings for this fountain being off. Currently, we're at thirteen thousand dollars in actuals with the fountain not being in use. So we're looking at almost seventy-five thousand dollars in savings without the fountain being used solely in PG&E. And that's how this fund is solvent for next year. If it was operating, it would go negative. So the CIP projects to maintain that, those fountains, fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three, we had a hundred and ten thousand for fountain display pumps and motors. Next year, we've got a valve replacement for three thousand, twenty-five, twenty-six, four hundred and eighteen thousand dollars for display pumps, motors, and recoding of that fountain. And then it continues on twenty-six, twenty-seven with fifty-eight thousand, fiscal year twenty-seven, twenty-eight, seventeen thousand. That's a total of six hundred and six thousand nine hundred dollars in the next five years to maintain those fountains. And these are all included in the CIP so we can track it. The, the one hundred and ten thousand dollars that we had this year, we, we did not utilize it to repair the fountain. It's been off since August, two thousand and twenty-two. There's an electrical malfunction due to the pit flooding, broke a auto fill pipe. So both fountains have been off, and the reason both have been off is because they, the power go, powers both of them at the same time. And we did look into seeing if we could isolate one and, and run the reflection fountain, but that would have cost about fifteen thousand dollars to separate the electrical. So that, that money that was included for replacement of motor and electrical components, we're looking to hopefully alternatively use those funds for maintenance activities related, related to the reflection fountain, develop some alternatives to the current step fountain, and then evaluate funding alternatives to repair the fountain in its current configuration. So we brought that to the finance committee to, to look at alternative ways to use that hundred and ten thousand dollars. In addition to the fountains, there's other improvements in that zone. There's an asphalt concrete trail, there's a timber bridge, gazebos, fences, plantings, and irrigation. And looking at a reserve fund study, the thirty-year replacement cost for these is approximately seven point seven five million. So the next steps for West Branch, an action item for twenty-three, twenty-four, we're going to proceed with finance committee's recommendation and hire a landscape art architect to start providing some alternatives to the fountains, start bringing some ideas to the table of what we can do in, in addition to running that fountain or bring ideas of how we can get that fountain running if the residents would like that also. So summary of projects, these are, uh, projects we completed this past fiscal year. Citywide lighting zone one, we continued on with the annual traffic signal pole painting. Worked down Alcosta, Norris, and Bishop. These are all on a predetermined schedule annually. Deer Road landscape renovation for citywide landscaping. We replaced the, the shrubs, added trees, we converted it all to shrub bubbler, so removed all the overhead sprays and water runoff. Citywide tree replacements on Doughty Road, Alcosta Boulevard. These are in, in addition to any of the storm replacements. Summer with loop, we began renovations on the landscape there and Fallview, Fallview Street and Fallen Leaf Circle, updating the, the, the shrubs and the irrigation to shrub bubblers again for drought tolerant plant material. Bank Creek, we installed LED lighting for all the signage and uplighting on the trees, and staff is able to use a Bluetooth mobile app, and we can reprogram this, and we've been working with the, with the HOAs to change the coloring for holidays, special events, whatever they ask for. Old Ranch Estates, we have been renovating the landscape in the cul-de-sacs. We've done White Haven Place, Vine Hill Lane, and Shadelands Place. And the Glass House, we recently completed a renovation, all new shrubs, new mulch, and there's going to be fence painting going on. And a lot of the, the irrigation, again, overhead spray is converted to, to bubblers. We did remote control valve upgrades in zone seven, eleven, twelve, thirteen, and fifteen. And then upcoming twenty-three, twenty-four projects. So again, we'll continue with this traffic signal pole painting. They're going to be working Crow and Bollinger and some, and Old Ranch Road. The Iron Horse Trail over crossing will begin, have the groundbreaking ceremony. Although the landscaping will be one of the last elements of this two-year project, so that, that'll be one of the last elements to go in. Citywide landscaping continuing on the center medians, we're going to look at Alcosta Boulevard and some areas of Bollinger. And we're going to remove the turf on Bank Creek and replace it with drought tolerant plant material. This, these are one of the, the last areas that have turf in the citywide area.
So I was going to ask, is this the last of the turf?
Yes, yes, yep. Old Ranch Estates, there's four more cul-de-sacs that need to be renovated, so we're going to complete that, so that entire area, those cul-de-sacs will be fresh landscape, and Village Parkway is going to get irrigation controller upgrades. These are EPA WaterSense compliant. They're all mobile enabled, twenty-four, seven water management that we can get real-time updates with. And then we're going to do landscape renovations and tree replacements in zones two, three, five, seven, ten, thirteen, eighteen, and nineteen. So this will just be various landscape removals and replacements and adding new trees. And then again, continuing on remote, remote control valve upgrades. These are essential for irrigation systems. It keeps everything running properly. We cannot have great landscape without the irrigation systems to support them. So zone two, three, five, seven, twelve, and thirteen will, will receive new remote control valves. There's no scheduled capital improvements in these zones. We'll just continue with continued annual operating maintenance zones four, six, eight, nine, fourteen, sixteen, seventeen. Some of these zones are, are underfunded and low on funds, and some have received extensive upgrades in the, in the past couple of years. So reestablishing the district, the steps taken annually by the city, March twenty-eighth, adopt a resolution describing new improvements and ordering the proper preparation and filing of the engineer's report. On April twenty-fifth, the engineer's report was approved, adopted a resolution of intention to levy and collect assessments and setting a public hearing. And today, conduct a public hearing and adopt a resolution con- And today, conduct a public hearing and adopt a resolution confirming the diagram and assessments and levying the assessments. So our recommendation is city council conduct the public hearing and then approve resolution, resolution confirming the landscaping and lighting district. Number nineteen eighty-four dash one diagram and assessments and levy in the landscape and lighting district. Number nineteen eighty-four dash one assessments for fiscal year twenty twenty-three, twenty-four.
Any questions, staff?
I have, I have one question. So, um, regarding Zone Six West Branch, so as per our finance committee, uh, advise you are looking at alternate option, right? So I heard like you mentioning, we are engaging the community members in that conversation along with HOA, right?
Yes, correct.
Okay, yes. And, uh, so we, are we going to share that through mailers or how we are making sure that all residents are getting that information?
Probably combination of mailers and informational meetings. Um, we want to be able to, um, develop some ideas first to bring to them, give them options to, to see. We don't want them just to look at a fountain that's not working and say, what do you want to do with it? We'd like to come up with some ideas to say, hey, here's a series of plans that we can look at, but that would be in-person informational meetings and flyers.
That would be great. Yeah, thank you.
Yes.
There's what, four or five HOAs in that?
There's five in one neighborhood that is not an HOA.
I gotta ask the question. It's seventy-two thousand dollars for a fountain, so we saved seventy-two thousand by putting that landscape in across the street.
Oh, right here?
Yeah.
PG&E.
That, that, that pump, oh, at, at his, the location we're talking about here, the pumps have got to be really big for pushing all that water up, all that. This, this one is.
Soap that's in it all the time.
This one, I would think the pumps are a fraction of that size. You know, if, if these are four horsepower pumps, those are twenty horsepower pumps. I'm just making numbers up, but I'm, I'm telling you, those are the kind of ratios you're looking at.
Correct.
Yes, I think it's going to come down when they work, they look great.
Yes.
But if they're not going to work, what are you going to do?
Yeah.
And if I remember right, they don't give any guarantee also on the fountain parts and all that, right? So if it breaks, again, we need to.
Well, that's what they're guaranteeing you, it's going to break.
And that's what our analysis will show. If, 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 if that is the option of the residents to have that fountain working, we'll have to show them, you know, true cost of what it takes to, to run those fountains and we'll have that in our analysis.
Yeah, I think we continue with looking at the alternatives and, uh, and present that to the West Branch folks and then, uh, do that survey, see what they want to say. I, I did have a question about Zone Five. You know, we heard in a public comment earlier, something about the paths there, the asphalt paths. So I think typically the landscaping lighting is really just shrubs and trees and irrigation and, and things like the lighting that it doesn't typically cover paths or do we cover paths, asphalt paths in any other zones? And could that be at some point incorporated into the work in Zone Five?
So we, so yes, we did meet and have that meeting about that path and engineering has taken that up with their sidewalk management. And including that in their analysis of prioritization and a series of steps they take to repair sidewalks and paths.
So it, it could be incorporated into the, the Zone Five.
It isn't, it is not a part of Zone Five.
It's not a part of Zone Five.
Yes.
Okay. Okay, that's a whole separate issue.
Yes, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I'll open the public hearing.
A move, we open the public hearing?
I will, oh.
Nice second, okay.
Okay, we have a motion for Rose Second, Perkins. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No, that was an aye from me too. Okay. Public hearing is open. Is there any cards to speak to this item? Thank you, John.
We've received one speaker card from Susie Ferris Endercombe.
Somehow I knew that was coming when you brought up that question.
Hey, Susie. Quick minute, and it was very appropriate, Mark, your question. Uh, because that was one of the, um, settlement agreements that, um, Martin was able to reach with my attorney. And I just want to commend John Bell. Uh, I've seen a lot of improvements since he's taken over. And Robin Bartlett for working with the residents of the zone to implement a lot of those settlement items and we're looking forward to the additional ones that, uh, people are really thrilled with what was done after a lot of years of.
Yes.
Nothing. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Susie. Any other cards?
There are no other speaker cards, no hands raised and no written public comment.
So I move to close the public hearing.
I'll second.
Motion for Rose Second, Perkins. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post, seeing none, it's four oh. Okay, so I saw, as we read to approve the amended engineers.
I move, we approve resolution twenty twenty-three oh six two approving amendment engineers' report for landscape and lighting district nineteen eighty-four dash one. And the rest of the things that are in there.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion, Perkins Second Armstrong. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
I post, seeing none, that's four oh.
Moving right along.
We're going to ride along. What else we got?
Um, preserve landscaping lighting.
Okay, next that ends, uh, a request to confirm the preserved landscaping lighting assessment diagram. Now, did we already do this where we?
Separate.
Okay.
This one's in transition.
Okay, is, are we going back to John Bell on this? Cause he just got compliments?
Yep. He's got. What is whistle?
All right, John.
Stranger.
So yes, this, this district is in transition. We're anticipating to take over full, uh, full maintenance of all the improvements this fiscal year. The background on this district, this was formed in two thousand and eighteen. Assessments fund the maintenance of public landscaping and other amenities. Currently, the improvements are maintained by the developer, but we are expecting full turnover twenty-three, twenty-four. And with this district, the maximum assessment rate is tied to inflation. So we, we increase the maximum rate based on the inflation, the, uh, San Francisco Bay Area, all urban consumers. So some improvements, um, on the east entrance coming up Purdue Road, we have DG path, um, trees, shrubs, irrigation. The east side of Freea Preserve Parkway, center median, both sides of the street, trees, shrubs, irrigation. So the west side of Freea Preserve Parkway. And then on the west entrance. So we do have another DG path on that far side. For our twenty-three, twenty-four operating budget, total operating cost is a hundred and two thousand three hundred and twelve dollars consisting of staff, contractors, which is tree and landscape maintenance, our utilities, PG&E and water, materials and yard and miscellaneous costs. Our, our district reserves, at the top, their expected reserve at the end of fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four with a full assessment is two hundred and ninety-two thousand one hundred and eighteen dollars. Um, we're going to use some excess reserve and we're going to apply it to the assessment to lower that cost. That's in the amount of fifty-seven thousand eight hundred and eighty dollars. So our final expected reserve will be two hundred and thirty-four dollars and two hundred and thirty-seven, two hundred and, two hundred and thirty-four thousand, two hundred and thirty-seven dollars. So the reserve, we have a required reserve for long-term deferred maintenance replacement costs. So of that, two hundred and thirty-four thousand, one hundred and eighty-three thousand, eighty-one dollars will be for long-term deferred maintenance and operating reserve of fifty-one thousand, one hundred and fifty-five dollars. So the assessment methodology, um, we start with our annual operation and maintenance costs. Um, we subtract the general benefit contribution. So this is the contribution attributed to other people using the district and benefiting from, from the landscape improvements. So that gives us a total assess, assessable direct cost of a hundred and fifty-four thousand, six hundred and seventeen dollars. We have indirect costs of eight thousand sixty-seven dollars. And then the use of the excess reserve in the amount of fifty-seven thousand, eight hundred and eighty dollars. So the total maximum cost that we can assess is a hundred and four thousand dollars, eight hundred and three. The maximum assessment per unit based on the five point three increase to the CPI is four hundred and twenty-two dollars. But the actual assessment that we are going to levy based on our analysis will be two hundred dollars per unit. So our recommendation, city council, conduct the public hearing and approve resolution confirming the preserved landscaping lighting district assessment diagram and assessments. And levy in the preserve landscaping and lighting district assessments for fiscal year twenty twenty-three, twenty-four.
How, how much of the, um, landscape in this area is under contractor control and how much of it is under, has it been turned over to the city?
So there's phase one and phase two, which is the majority of it. We've only received the Purdue Road extension coming up. That's the only one we have accepted maintenance for. Uh, we are finalizing.
Till you get to where the.
About where the water tower is.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay, so that's what we're responsible for today.
Correct.
And they are responsible for it and we expect them to turn over to us Christmas or?
We, the estimates we have gotten is October.
Okay, so we'll have it for most of the year.
Yes.
Okay.
So we, we are finalizing some, some landscape walks, some inspections. We've done two already, um, making sure everything.
If they're looking bad and.
Yep.
And any sprinklers that aren't working and. Okay.
There's a lot of washouts from the storms. There's, they did a lot of repairs with the, with the storm damage.
On the east side or we, what I just heard, we don't have the west side, just the east side.
East side.
Okay.
So John, you, you subtract out the, the general benefit cost. How do you figure the general benefit cost?
It is a, uh.
Yeah. That was in our finance.
Yeah, quite complicated formula, um, based on benefit factors, parcels, uh, what, what each unit factor is. The usage, the road usage, um, it's, it's a, it's a complete calculation that's in the engineer's report, um, to calculate that percentage.
So, but there's, there's, there's probably some, even though it's a calculation, there's probably some subjective evaluation as to what figures go into that. I mean, I, 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 I can't understand how you really can. I'm up with a defined cost for a particular general benefit.
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
And in the general, general benefit cannot be funded by anything in the zone.
Got it. Yep. Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other questions? It's in the nine point two. There's a calculation in that. Engineer's report, I'm looking at page two twenty-one, let's see. I'm trying to find that particular calculation because I know it's in here because I saw it. And I was, I didn't.
It's actuarial.
No, there, there's a, there's a calculation in here that says.
Yeah, I mean, we came up with that.
Two twenty, two twenty-one, there's some stuff.
Yeah.
Yes. Identification of benefits.
There it is, yeah, two sixteen. I didn't catch that. Thank you.
Page one forty-four.
Shred, are you have questions?
No, um, I'll move them, motion for public hearing.
Okay, we have a motion for a public hearing.
Zero six three.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second Perkins, any further discussion?
Mark. It's on page two eighteen.
Okay, seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, seeing none, it's unanimous to open the public here. Okay, public comment is open. Do we have any cards? Thank you, John.
We received no speaker cards. There are currently no hands raised and we've received no public comment.
Okay, last chance to speak to this, seeing none. We would close the public, no.
Okay, I move to close the public hearing.
Okay, we have a motion for Rose.
I'll second.
Second Armstrong, any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor to close the public here and say aye.
Aye.
Any opposing, seeing none, unanimous four oh. Okay, what's the next action? Who gets to jump?
I'll move, I'll move, uh, the resolution twenty twenty-three, there's oh six three. Um, confirming the preserve landscape and lighting district assess, diagram and assessments and levying the preserve uh, assessments for fiscal year twenty twenty-three, twenty-four.
Okay, motion Perkins, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second Armstrong, any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, seeing none, that's unanimous again, four oh. Okay.
Moving right along.
Moving right along. Public hearing's gone, do we have a second public comment? Okay, that's.
Team council report.
Oh, team council report, who's doing that? There you go.
Good evening. Thank you, uh, Mayor Hudson and council members. Uh, Jessica Reber with the City San Ramon Parks Community Services Department, very happy to be here tonight. Just to share with you the great things that our teen council has accomplished this year. Um, and it has been under the great leadership of our chair, R. Peter Gupta, who I will invite about this time to give you a review of the year.
Yeah, Peter.
Thank you so much, everyone, for having me here today. I'm really excited to share everything that the teen council has done this year, so I'll go ahead and get started. There we go. Okay, so first to start off with some history and background. Um, does, the teen council was founded in nineteen ninety-four with a group of dedicated and proactive high school students who are passionate about our city, our government and the teen community. Were a group of seventeen members and two alternates, along with six appointed ad hoc committees. And so this is a list of all of our wonderful members who've committed a lot of time and effort over this year, um, to the teen council. So I'll go ahead and start off with our ad hoc committee accomplishments. We had six ad hoc committees for this year, which were temporary project-based committees um, that worked on a lot of different assignments to reach our goals that we had for this year. So the first ad hoc committee was our smoking ordinance committee chaired by myself. So in this committee, uh, we worked with our city attorney, Martin License, to, um, meet our goals of reducing underage tobacco usage and smoking as well as banning flavored vape. Um, we did this by looking into terms that had already been researched and definitions, um, while also looking at other definitions and new, newer terms that needed to be included such as electrical, such as electronic smoking devices. Um, this committee also addressed issues, um, that the public had previously voiced in regards to further clarity with, um, where residences were, with where residents were allowed to smoke and other issues that were brought to us by the public. Um, so we made a lot of significant strides in starting this process and we hope that the committee continues on next year. Our second ad hoc committee was the Outstanding Teen Citizenship Award Committee, uh, chaired by Sadhana Tadapalli. And this year, the Outstanding Teen Citizenship Award was awarded to Fatima Hussain. This award was originally started in the term of two thousand and twelve and two thousand and thirteen. And since then, we've awarded this, uh, this award to a lot of qualified applicants over the years. All of these, um, people have made a significant contribution towards enhancing our quality of life in San Ramon. And this year, we received thirteen applications, out of which we recognized Fatima Hussain, um, who was also recognized here at city council as well, earlier in the year when she was given this award. Next, I'll move on to the Senior Technology Day Ad hoc Committee chaired by Aditya Jain. This committee focused on providing service for the seniors at our Al Costa Senior and Community Center. They supported the use of technology and helped seniors, um, with any questions that they had about their electronic devices and any issues that they may have had. Um, this event was very well received by seniors and anyone needing any additional help. And, um, a lot of people found out of this event's success through those seniors and which increased our attendance at the next event. Um, we got a lot of positive feedback regarding this event and hope that we're able to increase the frequency of this next year. Um, and the, these were just overall very valuable events. And our fourth ad hoc committee was the Wish Tree Ad hoc Committee chaired by Harshita. This committee was, um, meant to spread positivity and bring the teen community together, um, through, through. Um, through, through sharing their thoughts and feelings. So, for example, how this works was we have this wish tree that's in front of our San Ramon Community Center. And every month or so, we have different prompts um regarding a different theme, where teens are welcome to write their thoughts on. A little tag and tie it around the tree. These are usually in response to prompts. So, one of our biggest um. One of our biggest initiatives that we led with the wish tree was regarding Unity Day, which is a National Bullying Prevention Day. So students at Cal High and Dordie Valley High School had the opportunity at their schools to write their thoughts um about, about anti-bullying. And we were able to present those tags on our community tree. And following that month, that which was the month of October, we also had prompts regarding Women's History Month and Earth Day, which recently took place in April. And our fifth ad hoc committee was the Social Media Ad hoc Committee chaired by Darshita. Uh, the social media committee was a really great committee in terms of helping us get more traction on our Instagram account. That has been a really great social media outlet to reach many teens in our community. They posted member introductions to help the rest of the teens around San Ramon, get to know who we are as a council and communicate with us. We did note that there was additional viewership and engagement whenever we posted more regularly. So that's something that we hope to implement more next year. Um, however, this year we did explore a lot of new features of the app, such as reels and stories, which helped us connect with our audience very well. And our last ad hoc committee was the Ambassador Program Ad hoc Committee chaired by Tanishka Chawla. The ambassador program is a program that the teen council has had for a while, which includes um other teens and tweens in the community. That, that communicate with us and are kind of um like our liaisons to middle schools and high schools around San Ramon. This year, they focused a lot on sustainability and supporting our local businesses to build a sense of community in our city. They, they had a really nice deliverable at the end of the year, which was a video montage about sustainability. Which they named the Sustainability Project. And in this video, they highlighted the importance of being sustainable in. The recreational activities and just everyday activities that teens do to kind of spread that message that um Earth Day is every day. And this is a little collage of some of the volunteer activities that the teen council has participated in. Our council requires eight hours of volunteer work each month, but from each uh member of the teen council. This requirement helps us maintain an active membership and encourages our peers to volunteer as well. So um, some of the activities that the teen council volunteered in this year were the Teen Job Fair, Wish Tree Events and Senior Technology Days. And we had many, many programs within the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three year. Uh, one of them was the Teen Program Survey, which recently closed and um helped us. Get about one hundred and sixteen responses from our community, the majority of which being from teens. This survey helps the staff and the teen community communicate with each other so that everyone's needs are met. Then another um program that we volunteered in was the Teen Job Fair, which was as always a great success. Teens really seemed to enjoy the mock interviewing process, um, as well as all the other workshops. However, that one was one of the things that stood out. Then the Senior Technology Days were another program that we hosted, uh, along with the youth advisory committee retreat. Um, this was a really great opportunity for the, for our teen council to collaborate with committees in Danville, Dublin, Livermore and Pleasanton. It was a really great experience working with all these committees, hearing about what they had been working on in their cities, their different programs, initiatives and ideas. And um, we look forward to having that collaborative atmosphere again. And last but not least, these are our suggested goals for the next year. So our first goal is to review the teen program survey responses, which we recently collected. And collaborate with staff to expand on those opportunities for teens and explore how those new opportunities can address our community needs. Um, we did get started on this at our last meeting, um, where we re- reviewed the responses to the survey. Our second goal is to research and execute partnerships with local organizations, businesses and such to promote teen wellness, health and recreation. And our third goal is to continue the senior tech days and explore other opportunities to work with the senior advisory committee. Because we did see such a high level of interest and appreciation for this event this year. Our fourth goal is to continue to collaborate with local organizations and youth advisory committees. Such as the ones in our neighboring cities of Danville, Dublin, Pleasanton and Livermore, to um gain more knowledge and inspire. All of us to come up with even better, greater ideas. Our fifth goal is to continue the ambassador program and increase the involvement of those ambassadors at our meetings and ad hoc committees. To just um accomplish more tasks. And then our sixth goal is to continue awarding the Outstanding Teen Citizenship Award and seeking local partnerships uh with organizations. So that those awards can be sponsored by them. And our seventh goal is to expand the Sustainability Project, which was a new initiative that we took on this year with our ambassadors. Um, and we hope to do this uh to raise more awareness about sustainable practices as that is just becoming important. It's just becoming even more important as time goes on. And our eighth goal is to continue to establish monthly topics of awareness for the Wish Tree um to get teens to participate in those activities. And really have a conversation about some of these topics that come up every month. And our ninth goal is to continue collaborating with the city attorney's office to work on updating San Ramon's smoking ordinance. Our tenth goal is to explore ways to build relationships with the school district, high schools, middle schools and et cetera. Um, where, where we hope to look into the possibility of appointing a liaison for each school. Because having a liaison, we've noticed has been really helpful this year to all the committees and commissions of our city. And um, our eleventh goal is to explore collaborating with the Arts Advisory Committee and hopefully in the new Dordie Station. Community Arts Center, um, as that will be a very new and exciting location for teens very soon. Our twelfth goal is to establish a stronger social media presence for the teen council by using Instagram. And further developing our social media content calendar to post very frequently, uh hence keeping the engagement high up. And our thirteenth and our final goal is to develop educational outreach materials to address vandalism in city parks, including um. The pragmatic and financial impacts. And last but not least, I just wanted to say a congratulations to all of our graduating seniors this year. Uh, Darshita will be attending UC Berkeley. Aditya will also be attending UC Berkeley. Sachi will be attending the University of Washington. Sammy will be attending um UC Berkeley, actually is incorrect on this presentation. And today will be attending Indiana University. I will be attending Rensselaer Polytechnic Institute. And that is all. So thank you so much for listening to my presentation.
Yeah, I just wanted to tell you, congratulations on Rensselaer. My father graduated from Rensselaer. Got a bachelor's in civil engineering and a master's in civil engineering in nineteen forty-eight, so. Just a few years ago, so. But uh, and my sister was born in Troy, New York, and my parents were married in Troy, New York, so. Hope you enjoy Troy, New York and the winter.
Yes, I've heard.
Very different experience than, than San Ramon. What are you going to study there?
Uh, I'm hoping to study cognitive and computer science.
Oh, very good, very good. Any other comments?
I have no questions, couple, couple comments. After the public comment, yeah.
Oh, there's going to be a public comment? Okay, thank you. Do we have any cards? Let's open a public comment if anybody wants to discuss this. Do we have any cards?
We don't have any speaker cards. Uh, there are no hands raised.
Close the public comment. Now the comments are from.
That was a great presentation. I, I started as a liaison a couple of years ago with the teen council and uh. And you guys just continued to ratchet up the, the quality of the work. Uh, as time goes on, uh, I, I've not been participating as much. Council member Rubio has been the primary uh point of contact this year and I've been alternate, but you guys are doing a great job. I've. I, I get, I'm a liaison to the senior advisory committee too, and I can validate your comments about how valuable. That they feel that those senior tech days are. They, they love that. Keep up the good work there. It's a great relationship. I, I. I know they get a lot out of it, but I, I think you teens get a lot out of it as well, so keep that up. Yeah, I was gonna make a comment about the Wish Tree. I've, I've seen that. That's a, a great initiative there. And the teen, teen job fair, I was uh able to participate in that this year and conduct some of those mock interviews. And boy, it was a huge crowd, really rainy day, but a great turnout and I think a really worth worthwhile thing, so. Anyway, just congratulations to all the seniors. Thanks for all that you and the other teens have done and, and good luck at Rensselaer.
Thank you.
Shreeda, anything?
Uh, thanks, Sarpita, for a great presentation. Congratulations on your graduation and also going forward. All the best with your education. And um, congratulations on the achievements of your uh chair as a chair. And also to all your teen council members, especially on smoking ordinance. Um, thanks to Jessica for, from the staff, by helping our teens to provide them the pathway and guidance wherever they need assistance. Appreciate uh, on also, I think your suggested goals for the next year seems to be really good. Um, couple of things I would like to see is uh, one is on the smoking ordinance that you are following up next year. We need to make sure we share that um, do a little bit more education within the community, especially within the teens. Um, I do hear from our community members that there is some challenges going on with the substance abuse. So it will be great if you can add that as part of your number two suggested goal, which is teen wellness, mental health and recreation. That will be great. So help for our teens. And I think, yeah, it's amazing. So many suggested goals. It looks like uh, after all, with all the workload that you have on academics. And then on top of it, this is, this shows why our quality of life is so good in our community. Thank you. Appreciate it.
It's always the best compliment moment. All we have to say is keep up the good work.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'll just add in uh, the comment on the uh, the vaping thing. I, I don't know where that's all gonna go. But I'll just say that I, last week I attended a uh, meeting and gave some opening comments uh in Danville. At a fentanyl crisis uh seminar hosted over at the, the district head, school district headquarters and. Uh, there had a student panel that came up from students from all, you know, all the different high schools and vaping was a big subject. That they were talking about and uh, it was a, a pretty big deal. So, thanks for looking into that. I, I didn't realize it was as big a deal as it was even amongst the teens. I thought it was just kind of parents being concerned, but the teens are pretty concerned about it too. So thank you for taking a look at that.
Yeah, thank you.
Uh, one more thanks to our Parks and Community Services Commission for selecting such an excellent teen council.
Yeah, and, and thank you to Jessica and Jennifer as well for um being our mentors for this whole year. It was really helpful. So, thank you.
We hope they learned something from you.
And through the mayor, excuse me. I just want to add my own two cents about the, about the ad hoc committee. I, I want to give them a personal thanks for uh, all of the help that they gave us in putting together this uh, this ordinance. Uh, which will be before you, I, I hope shortly. But um, suffice it to say that, that, that the committee didn't just do what Ms. Gupta said they did. But they, they also just dug right in and looked at the American Lung Association's model ordinance. Compared our current ordinance to that model ordinance, went over both of the documents sentence by sentence. Uh, and decided uh amongst themselves which of the provisions in those ordinances would be, would be appropriate for our own community. Uh, and, and I, I was really impressed by their dedication and, and by how forthright each and every member was. In, in participating in this process. And uh, again, I hope that we have, that we can bring this ordinance to you very soon. And that uh, as many members of the committee as possible can actually be there for the adoption. And thank you again.
Thank you.
Thank you.
What, what is the status of the state law on vaping and, and flavored vaping and?
There is, there is a state law in effect, but it has several gaps that we're, we're hoping to plug with, with our own ordinance.
Okay, I, I don't think there's any action needed. We just accept the report. Thank you, Ms. Gupta. And enjoy the winners. Don't let them scare you off. Thank you. Ten point two.
Big one. Next page, yeah, next page, here we go.
Okay, and this is adopting fiscal year twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four, operating in capital budget. And establishing appropriate limits. Uh-oh, bringing out the big guns, Kelly Sessions.
Let me get this pulled up here. Okay. Good evening, mayor and members of council. It is my pleasure to present to you the proposed fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four. Budget for your consideration for adoption. This is very similar to what you have seen at previous presentations, so hopefully there are no surprises. Uh, I will direct your attention to this slide, though, to the left. Uh, you have seen in your packet what the new budget document will look like. This slide, we are proud to say, is going to be our new cover for the budget. Uh, this was prepared by our incredibly talented staff at Parks and Community Services. So we appreciate their work on that. Okay, uh, with that, let's jump in. Uh, for the viewing public or people that are hearing this for the first time, I thought it would be worthwhile to. Uh, just review very quickly the process that we have gone through to get us to this point where we are at today. We began the twenty-three, twenty-four budget process in January. And uh, in February, the departments formalized each of their budget requests. Early March, the interim city manager reviewed those department requests. And then in March and April, we revised those requests in order to balance the budget. You will recall that on April the eleventh, we had our first budget workshop. We met again on April the twenty-second for the council retreat and goal-setting session. And also uh, look at the five-year financial forecast. We held a second budget workshop on May the ninth. That is where you saw the first proposed budget. And also the five-year CIP budget at the same time. And that brings us to today, May the twenty-third, where we are pre- preparing for adoption. So, uh, let's take a look first of all at the all funds expenditure budget. We have an all funds uh, program budget of one thirty-one point one million. Uh, you will notice uh, in the pie chart to the left, that sixty-four percent of our budget uh is going to be spent on. General fund and Dordie Valley Fund. Uh, special funds comprise twenty-one percent of our expenditure budget. Eight point one percent is going to capital project funding and six point six percent to special district funds. You look to the uh, bulleted items to the right, uh, we see a little breakdown of how that all funds budget looks. An operating budget of ninety-eight point two million. Capital budget, ten point six million, internal service funds of sixteen point five million. Debt service funds of five point nine million. Special funds, non-operating of three hundred thousand and uh, one point two million for the Dordie Valley GAD. On the revenue side for our uh. All funds budget, we have an all funds budget of one hundred and forty-one point seven million. Uh, looking there at the pie chart, the, the percentages are roughly the same as on the expenditure side. With a general fund in Dordie Valley at fifty-nine percent. Uh, special funds comprising twenty-eight percent of those revenues. Uh, and special district funds at nine point five percent and CIP funding, capital project funding of three point three percent. Going to the, the bullets, you will notice that fifty-nine percent of that revenue is general purpose revenue. So eighty-three point nine million of that amount is for general purpose, which means that the other forty percent naturally is for, is special revenue. And it is restricted for their specific purposes. That forty percent breaks down to seventeen point four million for capital projects. Special revenue for the GAD and special districts of thirteen and a half million. Internal service funds of fourteen point eight million. Capital improvement program of four point. Capital improvement program of four point six million. Debt service of three point five million and the housing successor fund of four million. We will break this down a little bit further into the operating budget. On the expenditure side, on the left, the table shows a an operating budget of ninety-eight point two million. Uh, you'll notice that the operating budget based on the table is uh really broken down by department. So general government administrative services, all the departments listed there. In addition to the San Ramon Housing Fund and the non-departmental funds. Uh, again, a total of ninety-eight point two million on the expenditure side. You will notice that uh public works at just about forty percent and police services are twenty-nine percent of the budget. Those are the two largest departments. So uh sixty forty and thirty, about seventy percent of the budget goes to uh those public uh public service, uh public safety agencies. On the revenue side, uh also a budget of ninety-eight point two million. General Fund Dordie Valley Fund is uh by far the the largest portion of that. And that comprises eighty-five percent of the revenue. All the other uh sources of funding are quite a bit smaller, lighting and landscaping at about four percent. Uh, all the other special funds combined at about five percent. And then GAD, stormwater and uh solid waste combining for the last five and a five and a half percent of revenue. Let's drill down one more time. We will see what the general fund and the Dordie Valley Fund look like. On the expenditure side, we have a budget of eighty-four point two million, again, broken down by the departments in the table. On the revenue side, you we show the breakdown of revenues, the the largest source of revenue, of course, is property tax at about thirty percent. Uh, the intergovernmental, that orange slice, is about twenty-six percent, and that is primarily uh the CSA from Dordie Valley. So those two combined really are uh kind of the property tax portion of the budget. And that totals about fifty-six percent of general fund Dordie Valley Fund revenues. The next largest source of revenue to the general fund is sales tax at about sixteen percent. Uh, and then it starts dropping off, charges for service at eight percent, franchise fees at almost seven percent. Licenses and permits, T O T and property tax, uh all of those three combining for another eight point two percent and then everything else, all the other miscellaneous revenues at five percent, five point one percent. If you recall from our previous discussions, the this budget uh includes no new positions, so we are holding our F T E count at two hundred and eighty point seven five. Uh, the same as it is for this fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three. Now let's take a look. Uh, oops, where are we going? Okay. Okay, uh, we'll review some fund balances. The infrastructure maintenance fund, we have a beginning fund balance of one point one million. We are transferring one point five million in from the general fund. Uh, we are transferring out one point two million to capital projects, and so we will have an ending fund balance of one point four million. And you may recall, we also talked previously about the need for millions of dollars in future funding uh for the infrastructure maintenance fund. The healthcare fund, we have a beginning fund balance of about three hundred thousand. Charges for all of the healthcare benefits are made to the departments and that totals seven point five million. Uh, and that offsets the annual cost of healthcare of seven point five million, so we end up back where we started from with three hundred thousand dollars in fund balance. Uh, kind of for informational purposes, uh that we have the healthcare trust fund, which has thirty-five point five million in it set aside as of May twenty twenty-three. That fund is over one hundred percent funded per our actuarial report uh as of the fiscal year ending June of twenty twenty-one. At that point in time, there is a liability of thirty-four point nine million, which you see is less than the thirty-five point five million in the fund itself. Our next actuarial update is expected this fall. The trust is set up to fund healthcare benefits. As a reminder, it can be used for no other purposes. Uh, we are not proposing to make a deposit to the trust at this at during this next upcoming fiscal year. But we will, over the next fiscal year, develop a policy to help determine what an appropriate funding level would be for for a fund of this type. Pars Pension Trust has an estimated balance of one point six million as of March twenty twenty-three, and that includes the two point four million drawdown, which we made during the current fiscal year. Uh, likewise, we are proposing no new funding to be put into the pension trust uh in the twenty-three, twenty-four budget. And then just uh again, infor- informational purposes, uh our unfunded accrued liability per our most recent PERS actuarial report is twenty-six point five million. And uh that breaks down to about eighty-eight percent funded ratio for the miscellaneous plan and ninety-three percent for the safety plan. Okay, let's take a look at uh our debt service funds. We have uh our twenty-eleven certificate of participations. We will be making a five hundred thousand dollar payment this year to that fund. And when we do that uh to that loan, when we make that payment, then our debt will be retired at year end. So that one finally goes away. So yes, it's always a celebration when we can take one off the list. Uh, twenty nineteen certificate of participation, we are making the full one point six million dollar payment on that. Uh, there will be a twenty-four million dollar balance estimated at year end. That one does not get retired until June of twenty thirty-nine. The loan for the the twenty-twelve loan for L E D lights, we are making the three hundred thousand dollar payment this year. Uh, we will only have one hundred thousand dollars left to pay that one at year end, and so that one will likewise be retired. Uh, but this one in November of twenty twenty-four. Second reason to celebrate. Uh, twenty-ten pension up.
Helpful in taking pressure off the budget uh for the twenty-four, twenty-five budget. I mean, it doesn't make it easy. I I don't mean to make it a little bit long. But you know, when you can take six hundred thousand dollars effectively off uh out out of the pressure, that's just that's just six hundred thousand dollars.
Yeah, and and not only that, it's not six hundred thousand once, it's six hundred thousand going forward. So, yeah, uh, very helpful.
We take out another C O P, but yes.
Yes, uh.
Now's not the time to do that.
Let's let's not do that quite yet. Uh, the twenty-ten pension obligation bonds, we will be making a one point four million dollar payment. We will have a twenty-one million dollar principal balance left at year end, and that one gets retired in February of twenty thirty-nine. And then our most recent twenty twenty-one P O B, we will be making a two million dollar payment on that one. At year end, we will have a twenty-three million dollar balance, and that one gets retired in July of twenty thirty-five. Okay, general reserves. As you all know, our general reserve policy requires contingency reserves to be held at a minimum of thirty-six percent of the prior year's estimated general fund expenditures plus the transfer that we make into the Dordie Valley CSA Fund. Uh, our target amount, then, to hit our thirty-six percent policy is twenty point seven million. What at fiscal year beginning, the reserves will exceed that policy by one point seven million will be at forty-one percent. Uh, at fiscal year end, the balance is estimated to be at thirty-seven percent. And you'll see uh that first column, projected reserves as of July one, twenty-two point four million. We'll be drawing down one point two million over the course of the fiscal year. And at year end, we will have twenty-one point two million in the fund, thus exceeding our thirty-six percent reserve policy. The capital improvement program, five-year C I P is comprised of a hundred and thirty-nine projects at a total of seventy point two million dollars. The twenty twenty-three capital budget will include seventy-seven projects at a total of fourteen point nine million. And this year, we added nine new projects uh to the five-year C I P. These were recently approved at our last city council meeting. Uh, twenty twenty-three storm drain damage repairs, one point three million. Bishop Ranch Six Neighborhood Park, four and a half million. Dordie Station Library renovation at about six hundred thousand. Pavement management, seven and a half million, pavement repair at four hundred thousand. Uh, my personal favorite pickleball court conversion here at Central Park at fifty thousand. The San Ramon Trails Master Plan, a hundred and twenty-five thousand. Uh, Senate Bill thirteen eighty-three projects implementation, a hundred and twenty thousand and sidewalk repairs of two hundred and fifty thousand, again, for a total of fourteen point seven, fourteen point eight million dollars. Okay, so before you tonight is resolution number twenty twenty-three dash zero six four. If you approve this resolution, it will have the effect of approving the twenty-three, twenty-four operating and capital budget, which establishes the expenditure authority for the city during the fiscal year. This resolution will also establish the appropriations limit as required by state law. And it also authorizes the carryover of unspent capital project funds from fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three to twenty-three, twenty-four. If approved, our next steps will be to finalize the this year twenty-three, twenty-four adopted operating and capital budget document uh for distribution using our our new gravity software. So we're excited about that. We will post the document to the city website for uh public access and submit the document to G F O A and C S M F O for consideration of uh budget presentation awards. And uh before I conclude here, I just want to give a shout out to uh the finance team, the budget team, uh primarily led by uh Candace Daniels, our finance manager, and Vivian Gahn, project manager. Uh, they do a remarkable job in putting this together and uh making everything work. So really grateful for that. With that, I will conclude my presentation and open it up to council for any questions you may have.
Questions, but yeah. Um, have we been in contact with Mays and Associates and are they ready to uh start their audit? You know, I know they do some pre-work and then there you have closing and then on and on and on. Well, tell me about your contacts with Mays and Associates.
Yes, we have been in contact. Uh, we are in the process of finalizing our uh contract with them. They are planning to start the, we we'll finish up the contract piece of it this month, and they are preparing to uh come to the city in June to start the interim audit. So they're all on board and will be ready to go hit the ground running uh in June.
Good, good. I think at our last finance committee meeting, there was mention that uh you had submitted or were going to submit for the award for uh uh.
Previous audit.
Yeah, the previous audit. So that's still on track? It's been.
Yes, it's been submitted. Yeah, typically that is due um by the end of the of the calendar year, so December thirty-first. But because of these delays, we were able to get extensions, so uh we were hopeful at getting that again.
Shridar, any questions?
Fully comment.
Okay, we don't need public here and just public comment, that's right. Okay, let's open the item of public comment. Any cards?
We have one speaker card from Taiwan's country. Mayor Council members, uh, thank you for the opportunity to address Mr. Sessions. This uh today, tonight's presentation is getting extremely clear. And um I really think that the hard work that everyone put in earlier had really paid off. So I really appreciate uh Mr. Sessions for being very, very um meticulous in having all these um different sessions um earlier um throughout this uh process. Um, when I was hearing, though, when I was listening to his presentation tonight, I just have some comments. Fifty thousand dollars for conversion of pickleballs really isn't much, considering that we are not a challenged city, really. But when you deprive me and other um taxpayers who participate in public meetings of an entire public agenda, because our um executive clerk refuses to make copy of it, which is only like three dollars and seventy cents for the policy committee meeting tomorrow, for example, then fifty thousand dollars seems a lot, because when you convert these pickleballs, it's not just servicing our own residents, everyone who is able to access that particular court all benefit from this fifty thousand dollars that I helped pay for, but I may not necessarily benefit because I don't play pickleball. But what I pay, I have to pay additional copy costs, which doesn't make any sense. Please do not embarrass yourselves by forcing people to pay for agenda packet. Furthermore, I have mentioned before, trails are in the end annexed to a different jurisdiction, which is uh the Bay Area Regional Parks. It's no longer our jurisdiction. Why do we have to pay everything, hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars? And that jurisdiction pays nothing, and they bring other traffic from other cities to litter, to possibly damage and to bring crimes into our city. There has to be mutual responsibility as well in the finance um area between our jurisdiction and theirs. Otherwise, it is not fair to the taxpayers. S B thirteen eighty-three is um imposed upon us. Um, I wish Mr. Sessions had elaborated on what do we get out of spending that money? Furthermore, I would like him to please clarify. Earlier, he had said that we can possibly get reimbursement from FEMA for the drain, the water drain project. I would really like to see his um his um opinion at this moment, so we can have a better idea of his presentation. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further cards?
There are no more public comments.
Okay, any star nines or?
No hands are raised and no written public comment was received.
Okay, we close the public comment. It's a pleasure, Council. You know, we've we've seen it before and we've we're seeing it again, and I want to thank the uh interim city manager, the uh department heads and all the department staff and Candace. And because I know that it transcends everybody, everybody somehow plays a part in this. And I want, I'm very, very grateful that what you presented to us was a balanced budget that has a still has our thirty-six percent reserve, actually thirty-seven percent. And um so I'm grateful all around. And uh thank you very much for having it done so early. So once again, we're done by the end of May, and we'll get to watch Oakland deal with how many hundreds of millions of dollars. I mean, it's it's nasty.
And we can watch Kelly play pickleball.
Yes, and watch Kelly play pickleball, so.
Yeah, it's amazing. We kind of laugh at that, but I actually got another comment about the basketball courts that aren't here anymore. Thank you, Dave Hudson.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
I'll take that one any day of the week.
Yes, sir.
Yes, go ahead.
Yeah, I'd I'd like to also thank you, uh, Kelly, Candace, the finance team or interim city manager, department head staffing. Yeah, I think you said it quite well. This is one of those things, the budgets, one of the most important, if not the most important thing we do as city council is adopting this budget that you have prepared and uh for us to consider. And so thank you for all that. This is, it's one of those things that connects you know, what what do people want in terms of quality of life and and public safety and services with our city council vision? Uh, the staffing needed to do all that and execute all that, take care of our retire.
The staffing needed to do all that and execute all that, take care of our retirees, et cetera, so. Just thank you for tying all that together into this year's balanced budget. I think it was it's a good piece of work. And just my my compliments to everyone for their their work on this this year.
The budget and the housing element.
Yes, I give you great hair fast or anything.
I just want to echo our fellow council members. Definitely. Thank you. Thank you very much for all your work. Special thanks, Kelly and Candace. And to everyone who participated in this process. We appreciate for. Providing us with a balanced budget and to make sure that. Community is taken care with such an very diligently with all the numbers that you worked. And make sure that the quality of services are not dropped or degraded, so. We really appreciate all your work. Thank you.
Thank you all. Very much appreciated.
Thank you.
And with that, I will move motion resolution number twenty twenty three zero six four. Adopt the financial year twenty twenty three twenty four operating and capital budget. Establishing an appropriation limit and authorizing carryout project appropriations.
Do you have a motion?
Hold second.
Second Perkins. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Seeing none, that's four oh again. We get public comment. City manager.
Oh, I missed that. Thank you for I thought that was left out. I go, no, I'm not leaving out. Now is one of the highlights of the evening. The city manager comments.
All right, thank you, Mayor and Members of the Council. I want to start by also thanking the department heads and staff for working on the budget this year. As you know, we were about. We had a approximate eight to nine million dollar shortfall at the beginning of that process and staff really did. Dig deep into the budget to help. Deal with that shortfall, so I wanted to thank everybody for that. A few items to mention, you may or may not be aware, hopefully are very aware that we have an art and win festival. This weekend, it should be spread far and wide in the community, and I know Kathy's staff has been working feverishly to. Prepare for that, so we're looking forward to that on Sunday and Monday of this week.
And the weather looks good for it.
The weather looks good. Hopefully we'll get lots of wind. We also have summer camps are starting soon. If you go to San Ramon rec guide dot com, you'll see all of the summer camps. That still have capacity and are available for the summer. And last, I'd like to mention the recruitments that are currently open. If you go to the. The city webpage under what's new, the recruitments that we have closing on Monday, the twenty ninth are for the Housing Advisory Committee and the Open Space Committee. And we also have some committees that are open until filled, which is the Architectural Review Board, the Library Advisory Committee, and the Transportation Advisory Committee. And with that, I'll end the comments for this evening.
Okay, thank you. Believe it's now time for city council and the mayor comments. Go ahead.
Well, let's see. Since the last meeting, I I went to the. Contra Costa LAFCO Local Agency Formation. Council. Committee. Mission. Commission. And we had three actions. One was to dissolve the Knights and Town. Community Services District. It was established back. At the end of the last century in nineteen nineties. In relationship to flood control, but they they didn't ever collect enough money to actually do any. Flood control. And they eventually the. They did a majority vote in the on their last election. To dissolve, to quit collecting the assessment. And then appeal to the LAFCO to dissolve the Community Services District, which we did. The other two was the Richmond Country Club is adding a. Strip of housing along one edge. And it's currently outside the boundary of the West Contra Costa. Services District area for sewer. Wastewater, and so we authorize the annexation of that little strip of land into the. West Contra Costa. Sanitary District. And gosh, it's fun to be on LAFCO. It's an interesting process.
I thought you'd enjoy it.
It it's job is to. We do. Reviews of cities and services districts and fire districts and all kinds of districts. We do periodic reviews to see that they are functioning properly. And should they be dissolved? Should they be combined? They did one a few years ago up in the Pittsburgh area where they dissolved a. Health Services District that was collecting money but not providing any services. And so things like that. And then if you want to annex, which we did. Here in San Ramon, all those annexations out in Doherty Valley had to go through county and LAFCO. And so that's kind of what we do.
And a lot more. Thank you, Scott, for that, sir. Any other? Shredar.
Oh, thank. No committee reports, but on community side. Attended on Saturday, Association of Window Americans Summer Festival Event. Yes, I had opportunity to. I can along with the council member. Marisol Rubio, as well as Vice Mayor Armstrong. And it was very well attended, the San Ammon Community, it's like close to couple of thousand. And. Thanks to. See our police chief calls on there, so. Good to see you there. And the next one is on Monday, attended our senior volunteer luncheon.
Yeah.
Along with again with our council members and then on. The groundbreaking on Thursday for. Over crossing bridge, I don't know, strill or crossing beach. So those are the three events I attended this week. And looking forward for our arts and win festival. You all good. That's it. Thank you.
I also want to mention a couple weeks ago, Councilmember Perkins, Councilmember Rubio and I attended the. San Ramon Police Department Community Academy graduation. That was a great event. Thanks, Chief, for for your team for putting that on. On the thirteenth of May, I attended the. Xiao Pei Chinese Dance Showcase. Over at the Doherty Valley Performing Arts Center, and what a fantastic presentation by them. We've all seen them before at Lunar New Year celebrations and. The Bay Valley Chinese School graduation culture in the community, they they perform. Every year, and I had the opportunity to welcome everyone and and present some certificates of recognition. On the fourteenth. Sit with my wife since it was Mother's Day. I attended the Kung Fu Dragon USA performance, and they had some special guests from China, the Shaolin. Kung Fu Warrior Monks. This was the special event was the tenth anniversary. For Kung Fu Dragon USA. Again, you've seen them at all those same events, the really talented. Young folks and just some amazing talent. And they they have a studio that we host here in San Ramon, so I was able to. Welcome everyone and just incredible display of. Martial arts skills and. Discipline and respect and leadership demonstrated by all those. Who were performing. I mentioned earlier about attending the the fentanyl crisis seminar that was hosted by the Danville. Chamber of Commerce. We've heard in the past from April Rivera from the. National Coalition Against Prescription Drug Abuse. She presented some training on how to use Narcan, handed out. Hand out Narcan kits. To those to anyone who wanted them and to help. Deal with folks who are experiencing an overdose. There were speakers there from Discovery Counseling Center, police, fire, school district, county, but. Pretty important event and a really incredible group of students that participated in a panel as well. Last week, I had the opportunity to also spend time with a third grader Pearson Morford. He was the mayor for the day. And so we gave him a tour of City Hall. And Chief, thanks for providing a tour of the Police Department as well. I know he and his mom are really excited about that. He had won the winning bid as part of a. A Golden View Elementary School. Fund fundraiser, and there may be some more of these that we were going to be doing, but there was a lot of fun and he got up here and. Sat in your chair, Mayor Hudson, he banged that gavel and he just really loved it. Let's see, also after the Iron Horse. Boner, our North Trail Bonjour Overcrossing Ceremony, I went over to Forsome Farms. And like the senior. Volunteer recognition event, there was a volunteer recognition event over at the farm. And got to thank the those volunteers and our. Parks and Community Services Department and Commission and. Historic Foundation staff and our public work staff that does such a great job in keeping that park up. And then on Sunday, another community event, I was. The master ceremonies for the military recruit. Swearing in and Military Academy Selectee Recognition. Event, this is where we recognize high school graduates from across the area. All the services, they did a swearing in ceremony. And it was I got to provide some some remarks there as well, so a great event. And really excited to see our. Our young high school students stepping up and joining the military services. In service to our country. This year, as mentioned, Art and Win Festival, but we also have the Memorial Day Program. Over at Memorial Park to honor all those who died in service to our country. I'll be speaking at that as well, so I would encourage everyone to please join us. I think we're starting at nine o'clock. For that event over at Memorial Park, so hope to see you all there and. Lastly, yesterday I attended. A special tour of the. Senior Center, Al Costa Senior Community Center. It was a special meeting. For the Senior Advisory Committee and. Got to kind of walk around and. Take a a deep dive. Steve Cox from Parks Department did a great job showing us around and some of the new senior advisory committee members. Got to see things for the first time, hear about the different programs that are offered there and services and just a nice tour, so. And that's all I got.
That's awesome.
That's funny. I just, and for mayor comments, I'd just say this. First of all, I really want to thank Scott for taking on the responsibility at LAFCO. This is a highly contested seat within the county. It is that you don't get the seat easily. And it just shows the kind of respect you've. You've gotten from the the mayor's conference coming to these events, it pays off. And anytime any of you want to apply for any of these seats, let me know, I'll write the nomination. I'm giving up my seat on A bag. Don't make so many of these speeches. And I'm not going into San Francisco at nine at night or whatever. But.
Park is back there cheering, yay.
But again, these these are the kind of things that pay off for us in the long run. I mean, I wish we could have had you on LAFCO thirty years ago. With all that permitting fees and everything coming in from Doherty Valley would have been coming to us direct.
Yeah.
But that's the way it goes. It just shows the difference of. You you've got to get it outside our little comfort zones here to make things to. To make a difference than you have. Also want to. Thank everyone that showed up for the groundbreaking, especially my wife who got to do the shoveling. And. I'm really looking forward to the ribbon cutting when we finally open it. We made it clear to to C C T A. Tim Hale, Ivan Ramirez is their. Project Manager used to when as far as giving out the. The contracts, but you've got nineteen months. We want it open.
Yep.
We want this thing open before we break ground on the Crow Canyon one. Which will be the next one for San Ramon, but there will also be one at Sickmore Valley Road at Danville. Let them do that, the party, we'll see how good they do. I thought that you guys did a very good reception afterwards. Typical whenever you turn Karen loose. She just does a fantastic job. And looking forward to it. This has been a long time coming. It's not a small thing. What was it, something like four hundred lights? Red lights that you're not going to have to.
Well, it it's almost, it's just a little under three hours a day of red light at that crossing that won't happen.
And we we got money from the air district. My one little good. Still on that commit. For a dedicated bike lane across there. Be interested to see what how it ends up with a bike counter, whatever. I'm sure Chris has his way. We'll be after all the little goodies. But this is the new world order, the way things are going to be done. No more of these eight ten foot wide bike pass. They don't, they're not functional. You're going across our tier. This one will be sixteen feet wide. So we'll have bikes, we'll have the pedestrians and maybe even the autonomous vehicle at one point. But. This is something we've worked on for decades to get the money to. Takes a lot to put all this together. And public works, I'm sure we'll be right there in front. They've been waiting even longer. What was it, Maria? I knew it's got to be at least that last century we started on this thing. I am so glad we didn't do that pedestrian. Eight foot, ten foot wide thing.
Right about that.
It never would have worked, but thank you. Stay with it. And. I'm really looking forward to the ribbon cutting. Outside of that's it for me. Is there? We got a public comment, second public comment for anyone that didn't speak at the first.
Public comment on the. Council and.
Oh, any public comment for our comments? Any cars?
There are no public comments.
Okay, but we all said. So we have a public comment is open for anyone who wants to speak to the council. And any item that isn't on the agenda.
And hasn't spoken.
And hasn't spoken before. Any cards?
No, no.
Oh, we got them all the first time. We did good. Okay, we'll close public comment.
And we adjourn.
Any further comments? Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Let's adjourn.
We have a motion for Perkins, a second from Hudson. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.